Good evening and welcome to the public hearing of Livingston Zoning Board of Adjustment. Today is December 10th, 2024. If you're an applicant for a D or U variance, you should be aware that such a variance can only be granted after showing that special reasons for the grant of that variance exist, and that variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the zoning plan of the township of Livingston. You should also be aware that in order to be granted such a variance, you'll require affirmative vote of five members of the seven-member Board of Adjustment. Other variants should require a majority of four members to grant that variance. If you're an applicant for any variance and your variance is denied by this board, you have a right to appeal to Superior Court of the State of New Jersey within 45 days of notice of decision, and that court may overturn the decision of this board. If you're objected to any type of variance that has been granted, you too may appeal to Superior Court of the State of New Jersey within 45 days of notice of decision. If you do file an appeal, I ask that you please provide a copy of your complaint, excuse me, to the Planning Administrator Jackie Hollis. Pursuant to requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, also known as the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this special meeting was provided to Star Ledger and West Essex Tribune, and a copy was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. In addition to having notice posted, notice of this meeting was placed on the township's website. Members of the public are now opportunity to ask questions or make statements regarding each application at the appropriate time. When the time comes, if you'd like to address the board, please come to the front and use the microphone so we make sure your comments or questions are part of the record. We will now call the roll. Ms. Khan?
Ms. Khan is here. Mr. Kenya is not here. Mr. Horn?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Yeah.
Ms. Marachi is not here. Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Ms. Kana?
Here.
And Mr. Beer?
Here.
And Mr. Valerio, our board attorney, is here. And Jackie Hollis, our planning administrator, and Catherine Madre from the planning department is here as well.
Thank you. Would you like to call the first? Forgot that part.
Block 3811, Lot 4, 73 West Cedar Street. Application number 2024-47-V, 73 West Cedar, New Jersey LLC. Applicant seeks approval to construct a new single-family residence in violation of the following sections. 170-99, am I reading the wrong thing? I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong thing, okay. Block 1606, Lot 22, 54 Melrose Drive. Application number 2024-46-V, Square Group Realty LLC. Applicant seeks approval to construct a new single-family residence in violation of the following sections. 170-99-C2, front yard setback, 40 feet required, 36.5 feet proposed, 3.5 feet variance requested. 170-87-CC4, habitable floor area ratio, 30% allowed, 34.86% proposed, 4.86 variance requested.
Please let the record show that Mr. Kenya showed up at 6:26. We just started, perfect timing. Now I turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you so very much. Good evening, Board. My name is Matthew Passan with the law firm Sales, Commiss and Gross. And before I dive into this application, I just want to thank everybody for coming here early for the six o'clock kickoff. I know it's not easy, traffic isn't light, so we deeply appreciate the board here, Ms. Hollis, Ms. Madre, and our IT guy for always playing the MTV jams. I represent the applicant, Square Group Realty LLC, in connection with this application for habitable floor area ratio as well as a front yard setback. The applicant is here tonight proposing to demo the existing improvement, develop a new single-family home, which will include a porch, a patio, and improvements to the stormwater management for the subject site. This application itself, though, although proposing, or should I say requesting, a variance, is also eliminating two variances for side yard and aggregate side yard as well. In addition, although we are requesting front yard setback relief, that is the same front yard setback that exists there today. So it's really a nonconformity, but nevertheless, it still needs to be noticed and it still needs to be asked for relief because we are asking for a ratio variance, and by asking for a ratio variance, we are intensifying, by definition, that requested relief. With that being said, I have two professionals here with me tonight. Both of these professionals will be writing testimony before this board. I'll have my architect opine first, followed by my planner to hopefully wrap it up. And if I may, I'd like to call my first witness, my architect, Ayman.
Do you swear the testimony given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Give us your full name and spell your last name for the record.
Full name is Ayman Cedra, A-Y-M-A-N. Last name is Cedra, S-C-E-D-R-A.
Thank you, Mr. Cedra. If you may, can you please provide your educational credentials and determine whether or not you're licensed? Not determine, let them determine. Why don't you state whether or not your license is in good standing?
Yes, I have a bachelor's degree in architecture, and I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, state of New York, Pennsylvania, and Tennessee. And I did testify in front of this board and my license in a good standing and current.
Thank you. Does this board accept him as a professional in architecture?
Does anyone on the board have any questions, objections regarding this witness? There being no objections, the witness is accepted as an expert in architecture.
Thank you so much. Cedra, did you have an opportunity to visit the subject site?
Yes.
And did you also have the opportunity to review the zoning code when determining, or should I say drafting, these proposed plans?
Yes.
Terrific. Why don't you walk us through what we're looking to do here from both the floor plan and also elevation perspective?
Sure. I'm going to start with reviewing sheet AO1 that shows the basement and the first floor. The first floor consists of the living spaces in the house. We enter through the entry porch. We have an entry foyer in the middle. We have the dining room and the living room on the right. On the left, we have the garage. We have a coat closet. Walking down this way, we enter the house from the garage through a door, and also next to that door, we have the mudroom area. We have a powder room, and we have the guest suite here next to the garage area. The guest suite has its own bathroom and closet. The stair here, we have it in the middle of the house. On the right side here, we have the pantry and the butler pantry. Going back to the end of the house, we have the family room on the left side. We have the kitchen on the right side. And then walking out to the backyard through a wood deck and just uncovered patio, 12 feet by 12 feet. This is the first floor. The area for the first floor is 1,599. The garage area is 463. The floor next to it is the basement. The basement consists of a rec room, just one big open space at the back of the house. Also, we have a mechanical room facing the front of the house and a bedroom with an egress access. And also, we have a bathroom to serve this level and some closets, storage closets. The area for the basement is 1,599. The next sheet, AO2, shows the second floor plan. The second floor plan consists of four bedrooms, one being the master at the rear of the house, the back of the house. The master has its own master bathroom and walk-in closets. We have one closet here, one closet here. And we have three other bedrooms. One of them is being the en suite bedroom with its own walk-in closet and bathroom. The other two bedrooms, they're sharing a bathroom, and they have also closet spaces. At the front of the house here, or facing the front wall of the house, we have the laundry room. We have a pull-down stair for the attic access. This is the front. It's a colonial-style home. We're using hardy horizontal board and board and batten for this house. We're using some stone at the base. We're using dark roofs, shingle roofs. The roof is a hip roof. We have casement windows for this house. The attic is only accessible through the pull-down stair, and the height that I have from the second floor roof plate to the highest point of the roof, I have a height of 6 feet one and a quarter. That's the overall height from the highest point of the roof to the second floor plate. This is the rear of the house. We have a balcony at the rear of the house. It will be cantilevered from the framing, a lot of glazing. And these are the two sides. This is the look of the building here from the rendering. As you see, you see the stone at the base. We have hardy board, horizontal hardy board at the first floor, and then we did board and batten on the second floor, just gray colors, white, gray colors, black roof. And also, we have some wood slats, you know, just to create some accents on the walls. That's all. So the variance we're applying for, the floor area ratio, is 30%. We're applying for 34.86 with a 4.86% increase. We are not exceeding the habitable floor area, which is, the code calls for 3,220, and our house is 3,219. That's adding the livable area on the first and second floor and not including the garage or the basement.
And just for clarification, we say garage, not including the first 450 square feet of the garage, but does include the additional 13 hangover, right?
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
Yes.
Just real quick, I don't think we have that. Can we get that rendered?
Yes, we can mark it in A1, please. Thank you. Sorry about that. And that's a rendering of the front facade, that's A1, today's date.
The building height calls for 35 feet. Our building height here is 29.34 feet. We're almost 5 feet and change below the required height.
And just for clarification purposes, again, the attic itself is a pull-down with a pinnacle height of 6.1 feet, so it could not be habitable, correct?
Correct. And this is a hip roof configuration. There is no windows, so it's all enclosed.
Perfect. Thank you. I have no further questions for this witness.
Does anyone have any questions for this witness? I don't think anyone in the public has any questions, so just taking a stab.
All right, if I may, I'd like to call my last witness, my planner, Mr. Nick Graviano.
You swear the testimony about the given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, again, give us your full name and spell your last name, please.
Yes, my first name is Nicholas with an H, last name Graviano, G-R-A, V as in Victor, I-A-N-O.
Great. Mr. Graviano, can you please provide your educational credentials and whether or not your license is still in good standing?
Yes, I have a bachelor's degree from Rutgers University, a master's degree from Rutgers University, and a law degree from the Temple University School of Law. My professional planning license is still valid, hold an AICP certification, and I've been qualified by this board on numerous occasions.
Does anybody have any questions or objections regarding this witness? There be no objections, the witness is accepted as an expert in planning. Terrific, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Always a pleasure being here.
Nick, did you have an opportunity to study the subject site, the master plan, and also the zoning code?
Yes, I've been on this site at two occasions now. I went last time, I went this time, looked at the zoning ordinance master plan as well as the professionals' review letter for this application.
Terrific. And did you also review the plans that we submitted?
Yes, I have.
Terrific. Why don't you walk us through the request of relief and why you believe that the site can accommodate it?
Yes, the main variance the applicant's requesting this evening is the habitable floor area ratio variance, whereas 30% is permitted, the applicant is requesting 34.86%. There are additional C variances being requested as well. The applicant is deficient in lot area and lot width. These are existing conditions, not augmented by this application. They certainly could be granted under the C1 criteria, where a strict application of the municipality zoning ordinance would create an undue hardship upon the applicant. As Mr. Passata indicated, the applicant is also requesting a front yard setback variance, whereas 40 feet is required, 36.5 feet is proposed, 36.26 feet is existing. The average established setback in the area is 36.36, so the applicant is in keeping with that established setback. That can certainly be granted under the C2 criteria, promoting desirable visual environment and creative development techniques. That's purpose I. There's no substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance with the granting of that variance. As Mr. Passata indicated, the applicant is removing existing deficiencies for minimum side yard and minimum and aggregate side yard. So when you're examining the habitable floor area ratio variance, the applicant must demonstrate that the site can accommodate the proposed building, given the request for the habitable floor area ratio variance. So in this context, the applicant is certainly meeting all setbacks with exception for the front yard, which is keeping that established front yard setback. I would also like to note that the applicant is actually reducing lot coverage in this situation by 2.6%. So that's 2.6% of impervious coverage that's being eliminated with this project. The applicant is also providing a dry well, stormwater drainage system, which does not exist today on a site that has more impervious coverage. So certainly, this proposal advances purpose A of the municipal land use law, promotion of the public health, safety, and general welfare. It also advances purpose G, sufficient space and appropriate location for a variety of residential uses to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens. And lastly, it promotes purpose I, desirable visual environment and good civic arrangement and design techniques. There is no substantial detriment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance with the granting of this FAR, habitable floor area variance, and the applicant is meeting the habitable floor area square footage. So it's certainly a house which is in keeping of the neighborhood.
I have no further questions for this witness.
Anyone on the board have any questions for this witness? Do you want to make any closing statement, or you're done?
I'll waive it.
Okay. Anybody want to make a statement? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Ms. Kana? I know we don't do that anymore. Ms. Kana and Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Ms. Khan votes yes. Mr. Kenya?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
And Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, can you just have them clarify the motion? I make a motion to approve or deny that that has to be on the record.
Yes, thank you.
Let's do it the right way. Well, thank you for your testimony tonight. We appreciate the fact that you are maintaining the setbacks, and you've actually eliminated the side yard setbacks, as you pointed out, and you have also reduced the impervious coverage. We appreciate that. And I think this new structure is of no detriment to the neighborhood. In fact, it's going to probably enhance the neighborhood. And for those reasons and more, I make a motion to approve this application.
Second the motion to approve.
Block 3811, Lot 4, 73 West Cedar Street. Application number 2024-47-V, 73 West Cedar, NJ LLC. Applicant seeks approval to construct a single new family residence in violation of the following sections. 170-99-C4, rear yard setback, 35 feet required, 31.22 feet proposed, 3.78 feet variance requested. 170-87-CC2, habitable floor area ratio, 30% required, 34.18% proposed, 4.18% variance requested.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Passan with the law firm Sales, Commiss and Gross, and I represent 73 West Cedar, New Jersey LLC. This is an application for a habitable floor area ratio as well as a rear yard setback. For an application, what we're looking to do is demolish the existing improvement and develop a new single-family home. Although the application is requesting a rear yard setback, it's actually an improvement to the intensification which currently exists there for the rear yard setback. In addition, all of the bulk measurements are compliant, including the habitable floor area, but it's rather just the ratio that we are seeking relief for, even though it's technically not an undersized lot at 9,419 square feet. With that being said, I have two professionals to testify tonight. I have an architect and also a planner as well. And if I may, I'd like to have my first witness introduced. Thank you. I'm sorry.
You swear the testimony given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Give us your full name for the record.
Full name, Ayman Cedra. Last name is Cedra, S-C-E-D-R-A.
Mr. Cedra, can you please state to the board whether or not your license is still in good standing from 10 minutes ago?
Yes, still in good standing and current.
We can accept you as an expert in architecture.
All right, Mr. Cedra, why don't you walk us through the proposed development that year?
This house, we're designing a single-family house. The first floor area is 1,561. The first floor consists of the living spaces and two-car garage. The basement consists of one big rec room, and we have a bedroom and media room. The livable area in the basement is 1,561. The second floor consists of the bedrooms. We have four bedrooms. Every room has a bathroom and a closet, except for two bedrooms, they're sharing a bathroom. The exterior of this building, this is the look of the building from outside. It's a colonial-style home with the shed roofs. We introduce the white and black roofs. The white is the siding. We have a lap siding on the first floor and board and batten on the second floor. Casement windows. You know, it's a colonial style with some modern accent. And this is the outside of the building. The second story, the attic is only accessed through a pull-down stairs from the second floor. And the roof height from the roof plate to the highest point of the roof is 7 feet, exactly, from the second floor plate to the highest point of the roof is 7 feet. Now, regarding the square footage, we have the first floor at 1,561, the garage at 435, the second floor at 1,659, with the total floor area ratio of 3,220, which is 34% and We only applying for a 4.18% variance for the ratio. We are in line with the habitable floor area, which is the 3,220. We also applying for a rear yard variance relates to the deck at the back, which is the proposed, is 31.22 feet. That's all.
I have no further questions for this witness.
Does anyone on the board have any questions for this witness?
Back to you. If I may, I'd like to call my next witness, my last witness, Mr. Graviano, my planner.
You swear the testimony given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Mr. Graviano, is your license still in good standing for planning?
Yes, it is.
Terrific. Does this board accept him?
We can accept you as expert in planning.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Nick, did you have an opportunity to review the plans, visit the subject site, and then also review the municipality's code and master plan in relation to the single-family home proposals?
Yes, I did.
Terrific. Why don't you walk us through the relief we're requesting here tonight?
Okay. The applicant's first variance being requested is for minimum lot depth. That's an existing condition, not augmented by this application. The code requires 125 feet, where 117.74 feet are existing and proposed. That variance could be granted under the C1 criteria without substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. As indicated in the architectural testimony, the applicant is requesting a rear yard setback for the enclosed deck, whereas 35 feet is required, 31.22 feet is proposed, 29.59 feet is existing. This is a lot that has a deficient 7.26 feet lot depth. The applicant is requesting the rear yard setback variance of 3.78 feet. I would like to note that this is for an open deck that simply has a roof. This applicant would certainly be willing to have a condition of approval that prohibits the enclosing of that rear open deck in the future. So I think that is a good safeguard for the municipality to ensure that that's not living space down the road. That variance could be granted under the C2 criteria, advancing purposes A, GNI, the municipal land use law, without substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance, given a deficient lot depth of the property. The house is established at a front yard setback that does allow for two cars parking in the driveway. So looking at the biggest variance the applicant's requesting, that's for the habitable floor area ratio. 30% is permitted by code. The applicant is requesting 34.18 feet. I would like to note that the applicant is right on the dot for the habitable floor area square footage, whereas 3,220 square feet is permitted, and that's the applicant's proposal before you this evening. Looking at the setbacks, the applicant's going to meet all the required setbacks except for that very modest enclosed rear deck. So the site could certainly accommodate the proposed building, given the request for the increased habitable floor area ratio. This is another property that will be providing a stormwater management system which doesn't exist today. So certainly advancing the purposes of zoning A, a promotion of the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare, also advancing purpose G, sufficient space and appropriate location for a variety of residential uses to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens. And as Mr. Cedra's impeccably designed house indicates, it'll also create a desirable visual environment through good civic design and arrangements and creative development techniques. There's certainly no substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance with the granting of that habitable floor area ratio variance.
Mr. Graviano, when it comes to the rear yard setback, is it correct that that is in connection with the proposed porch?
Yes, it is for a covered deck, yes.
Right, and therefore it's open air, correct?
Yes, and the applicant would agree to prohibit from enclosing that for living space.
Okay. And then my last question is, is it also true that the proposed rear yard setback is actually a reduction intensification comparatively to what exists there to that?
Yes, the numbers I provided before is 29.59 exists today for the dwelling, and the applicant is proposing 31.22 for that covered deck.
So before it was for just the dwelling, now it's the dwelling and the cover porch?
Yeah, the dwelling actually meets the setback except for the covered deck, yes.
Terrific, thank you. I have no further questions for this witness.
Does anyone on the board have any questions for this witness?
Public?
Anybody in the public have any questions for this witness?
Nope.
All right, thank you so much. I waive my summation.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody want to make a statement? Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve, subject to the condition of the covered porch not being able to be enclosed at a future time.
I second it.
Okay, Mr. Horn?
Approved.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Ms. Khan votes yes. Mr. Kenya?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Kana?
Yes.
And Mr. Beer?
Yes.
We should schedule all of our meetings at 6 o'clock.
That's what I'm saying. Thank you.
All righty. All righty.
Block 3203, Lot 60, 15 Brookside Place, application number 2024-56-V, RODAC Builders LLC. Applicant seeks approval to construct a new single-family residence in violation of the following sections. 170-99C2, front yard setback, 40 feet required, 32 feet proposed, 8 feet variance requested. 170-87L1D, front side yard, corner lot setback, 35 feet required, 10.92 feet proposed, 24.08 feet variance requested.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Passan with the law firm Sales Commissar and Gross, and I represent the applicant, RODAC Builders LLC. It is beneficial project here that we are proposing here tonight because we are not asking for a ratio this time, but rather just for side yard setbacks, or should I say front yard, side yard, and a front yard setback. You'll hear the testimony tonight that'll confirm that although we are asking for both relief, both of these reliefs that were requested before this board are actually a reduction in intensification for both the front side and also the front. And when you take into consideration the established setback line, in a way, it actually isn't a variance anymore for front yard setback. Nevertheless, we are proposing this application, which will also include a patio and a drywall improvement as well, so to improve the stormwater mitigation for the subject site. This application will have two professionals testifying. One will be my architect, and the second one will be my planner. And if I may, I'd like to call my first witness, my architect.
Please do.
Thank you.
You swear to testimony given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please give us your name for the record.
Ayman Sedra. Last name is Sedra, S-E-D-R-A.
And here's a leading question. Your license is in good standing?
Yes.
Thank you.
We can accept you as expert in architecture.
Mr. Sedra, please walk us through what we're proposing here tonight.
Sure. We're proposing a single-family residence here on this lot. The first floor consists of the living spaces, and also we have two-car garage. The area for the, for the first floor livable area is 1,268. The garage area is 439. The basement consists of just one big rec room and a bed. Also, we have a bedroom and a bathroom. And this level, the area is 1,268. The second floor consists of four bedrooms with bathrooms and closets, and also we have a laundry room facing the front of the building. The second floor area is 1,628. The total first floor and second floor is 2,896 with the floor area ratio of 29.99%. And that's below our accord threshold, which is 30%. The exterior of the building, this is a colonial-style home. We have, the front is not as wide as the side. The side is facing the side. The street is pretty wide. And this is the outside of the building. It's a colonial-style home with horizontal boards at the first floor and board and batten at the second floor. We have black windows, casements. We have dark roofs and dark soffits. And also, we have stone at the base of the building. The height of this, the height of this building is 34 feet, 164 feet. The attic is only accessible through a pole downstairs from the second floor. There is no windows on the gable end of the house facing front or the side. We have just a small window at the back just for ventilation. The height of the attic, from the attic floor to the highest point of the roof is approximately 10 feet. We have the collar tie at 7 feet. The collar tie runs horizontally about 7 feet. That's it.
Terrific. I have no further questions for this witness.
Anybody on the board have any questions for this witness?
I have a question. The height of the attic is at 10 feet. Is there going to be living space or?
There's no, no, it's not going to be living space. There's no access, there's no like staircase going to that. It could just pull down.
Yeah, thank you.
I do actually have a question. This, the building is on the corner. The right side view is, is kind of a little bit of a lot, much? I don't know, can you discuss that a little bit? I mean, is, I just, because it's close to the street, I just see it's, if you pull up the view.
So this is, this is the side that?
Yeah.
So this is the side that faces the side of the street. It has lap siding, and then we have a vertical board and batten at the top. I can maybe improve that a little bit for the static part of things in relationship to the windows.
Yeah, I think that might be a little helpful from my eye. I don't know if anybody else on the board has any view on that or not, but that's the only thing I was thinking from that.
Definitely. I can improve it and maybe make it balanced in the gables, the windows, so they look very symmetrical. Again, that's not an issue.
We can agree on the record as a condition of approval to modify the facade of the side facing the street so that there's more context.
Okay. Back to you, sir. I think we're good. Anyone in the public have any questions for this witness? Did I ask that? I'm sure I did, but no, no one.
All right. I'd like to call my last witness, my planner, Mr. Nick Graviano.
Nicholas with an H, last name Graviano, G-R-A-V-I-N-O.
Mr. Graviano, is your license still in good standing for planning?
Yes, sir.
Have you had an opportunity to review the project?
Yes, I have. I've also been to the site.
Terrific. Does the board accept him as expert in planning?
Yes, we can accept him as expert in planning.
Terrific. Why don't you walk us through the proposed variance relief and why you believe that we can satisfy those specifications?
Yes, the applicant's requesting a variance for block 3203, Lot 60, 15 Brookside Place. This is an exceptionally shaped piece of property. This is a zone that requires 75 feet by 125 feet. This applicant has 50 feet by 192.05 feet, so it is a longer parcel than it is a wide parcel. The applicant is requesting an existing condition variance for the lot width, whereas 75 feet is required, 50 feet is existing and proposed. That certainly could be granted under the C1 criteria without substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. The applicant is also requesting a front yard setback, whereas 40 feet is required, 32 feet is proposed. I would like to note that 28.7 feet is existing, so the applicant's actually improving this by 4.3 feet. The established front yard setback for numbers 9, 11, and 13 are roughly 30 feet, so the applicant is in keeping with that setback. That variance certainly could be granted under the C2 criteria advancing purpose I, promoting a desirable visual environment and good civic design and arrangement without substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. The applicant is also requesting a front yard setback for the side yard, which is the cul-de-sac street. 5.26 feet exists today. The applicant's new dwelling will actually be at 10.92 feet. Strict application of the municipality zoning ordinance would require a house that's five foot wide, certainly not something that I think you see in today's building world. So that, that front yard setback variance could be granted under both the C1 criteria due to the double front yard situation of the slot and the narrowness of the specific piece of property, and could also be granted under the C2 criteria advancing purpose I, desirable visual environment. There's no substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance with the granting of that variance. I think the applicant's proposal of a roughly 30-foot wide house is appropriate in this context.
I have no further questions for this witness.
Does anyone on the board have any questions for this witness?
No, I was going to make a comment.
Yep.
Okay, I'll make a comment. Thank you very much. I think this is a great design, and I appreciate the fact that you moved the two setbacks, the front yard and the front side yard, and sort of re-proportioning the house, given the fact that it is so deep. So thank you very much. And with that, I'd like to make a motion.
I just, I neglected to ask if anyone in the audience had any comments. None, and do you want to make a closing statement? Feel good.
No, thank you.
Feel free.
Okay, so yes, I will make a motion. Ms. Khan votes yes. Ms. Kana?
Yes.
Mr. Kenya?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
And Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Okay. Are we ready to call the last application?
Please.
Okay. Block 30, Block 3100, Lot 3925 Wardell Road, application number 2024-55-V, RODAC Builders LLC. Applicant seeks approval for a two-story addition with a deck in violation of the following sections. 170-99C2, front yard setback, 40 feet required, 28.75 proposed, 11.25 feet variance requested. 170-99C3, front yard setback, 10 feet required, 3.78 feet proposed, 6.22 variance requested. 170-99C3, left side yard setback, 10 feet required, 3.21 feet proposed, 6.9 feet variance requested. 170-99C3, aggregate side yard setback, 30% required, 13.58% proposed, 15.52% variance requested. Garage, 170-3, private garage, minimum inside dimension, 12 feet width and 20 feet height required, 11.6 width and 20.8 height proposed, .6 feet width variance requested. 170-87CC4, habitable floor, floor area ratio, 30% required, 35.98% proposed, 5.98% variance requested.
My name is Matthew Passan from the law firm Sales Commissar and Gross, and I represent the applicant, RODAC Builders. Although it sounded like Ms. Khan was reading off a CVS receipt, I assure you that the reality is that all these variances that we're requesting here tonight are actually existing non-conformities but for that ratio itself. And the reason why is that this site is plate. It's plate because it's a natural hardship. The natural hardship is that it is essentially about 20% undersized. So because of that, you have the existing non-conformities. With that being said, we do have the ratio, but making sure that we can have a site that could accommodate this ratio we're requesting, we are approximately, I would say, 600 square feet below what is permitted for habitable floor area. So again, although it looks like we have a slew of variances, the reality are, reality is whether or not this application gets approved tonight or not, they still exist. And as far as the ratio goes, the policing of that is the habitable floor area itself, of which we're 600 square feet below what is permitted for the subject site. With that being said, I'd like to introduce two witnesses that I'll have here tonight. I'll have my architect, Mr. Ayman Sedra, and also my planner, Mr. Nick Graviano, to put that testimony on the record and therefore for your adjudication. If I may, I'd like to call my first witness, my architect, Mr. Ayman Sedra.
Please do.
Mr. Sedra, you swear to testimony about to give this matter will be the truth? The whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Give us your full name for the record, please.
Ayman Sedra. Last name is Sedra, S-E-D-R-A.
And your license is in good standing in architecture?
Yes.
Thank you.
We can accept you as an expert in architecture.
Hi, Mr. Sedra. Did you have an opportunity to visit the subject site?
Yes.
And also review the zoning code and master plan for this zone?
Yes.
All right. Why don't you walk us through what you're proposing here tonight?
Sure. We're proposing an addition to existing single-family. So the addition at the first floor consists of rear addition to the existing house. The first floor of the house consists of existing one-car garage, which it will stay. We're also proposing a second car garage to the house. And the first floor consists of all the living spaces. We don't have a guest bedroom in this level, given the small footprint of the house. We only have a small home office. The first floor area for the, for this house is 1,277. The garage is 478, with 450 is not counted, and the remaining, it's getting counted toward the square footage. The basement consists of just a rec room, one open big rec room, and a bedroom at the back of the house. And also, we have a bathroom and closet. The area for the basement is 1,277. The second floor consists of the slaving areas where we have four bedrooms, and we have also a laundry room. The second floor area is 1,404. The total floor area for the first and second floor is 2,681 with the floor area ratio of 35.98. Also, I would like to mention that the second floor has an open, or the stair foyer. It's a, it's a two-story open stair, which we, in the town, as we know, we count, we counted this space twice, which is only used at the lower level. And this area for the stair is 91 square feet. The exterior of the building is, is a colonial-style home with the, you know, stone base, board and batten at the upper gable, and then the rest of the house is hardy horizontal lap siding. We're using some nice big windows at the entry foyer, and the windows will be double hung, casement windows for this house. We're using dark roofs and dark soffits. The attic only accessible with a pole down the stair from the second floor. And the height from the attic floor to the highest point of roof is 8' 4 1/4. And also, the collar tie is like, I would say like 6' 5, 6' 6 from the attic floor. That's it.
So again, just to confirm, the attic space itself cannot be habitable?
Yeah, it cannot be habitable. It's just, just accessible with the pole down the stairs, and there is not enough height up there as well.
Great, thank you so much. I have no further questions for this witness.
Does anyone on the board have any questions for this witness? Anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? Back to you.
I'd like to introduce my last witness, my planner, Mr. Nick Graviano. Please.
You swear to testimony given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Give us your full name for the record, please.
Nicholas Graviano.
Mr. Graviano, is your license still in good standing for planning?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
We can accept you as a expert in planning.
Thank you. So I've had an opportunity to review the plans, the municipality's master plan and zoning ordinance. I've also visited the site. The applicant is requesting a habitable floor area ratio variance along with C variance for a specific piece of property known as Block 3100, Lot 39, with a street address of 25 Wardell. This is a home constructed in 1940 that's currently 1,320 square feet. The applicant is requesting relief tonight to build an addition on the rear of the dwelling. All of the variances that you heard rattled off in relation to setbacks and lot area and lot width are existing on the site today. The applicant's proposed addition conforms to all yard setbacks. So when you hear of a required side yard setback and aggregate side yard setback, those relate to conditions that exist in the dwelling today. And Ayman, can you go back? And when you look at the, the floor plan proposed by the applicant, if you see that the little bump out to the left of the dwelling, that bump out's actually double the size today. The applicant is removing a portion of the addition to that side of the house to bring that side greater in conformance to the side yard setback variance. So that, that relief over there is actually being reduced by approximately 50%, and the addition is going in the rear, rear of the dwelling. and the addition is going in the rear, rear of the dwelling. Mr. Passata indicated this is an undersized lot, which ties into the request for the habitable floor area ratio. The applicant's lot area is seventy-four hundred fifty-one square feet, whereas nine thousand three hundred seventy-five square feet is required. That's a deficiency of one thousand nine hundred twenty-four square feet. That relief could certainly be granted under the C-one criteria without substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. The same goes for the lot width variance being requested. Fifty foot is existing and proposed, whereas seventy-five feet is required. The front yard relief, side yard relief, and aggregate side yard relief fall under the same category. So moving on, we're going to examine the habitable floor area ratio variance. The, the applicant's proposal is requesting a five point nine eight percent relief. However, the applicant's habitable floor area number is actually five hundred and thirty-nine square feet less than what's permitted by ordinance. So the ordinance permits three thousand two hundred and twenty square feet, whereas the applicant is proposing two thousand six hundred eighty-one square feet. Two thousand six hundred eighty-one square feet in today's day and age is certainly a modest-sized house, which I think is befitting of, of the site and, and the neighborhood as a whole. The applicant is proposing stormwater management system to the site, which does not exist today. And as I mentioned previously, the applicant is reducing the side yard setback relief by fifty percent on that side of the house by removing a portion of that addition. So certainly looking at the positive criteria, this proposal advances purpose A, promotion of the public health, safety morals, and general welfare by reducing that side yard setback and by providing onsite stormwater management system. It also advances purpose G, sufficient space and appropriate location for variety of residential uses to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens. And there's no substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance with the granting of the habitable floor area ratio variance.
And Mr. Graviano, the five hundred thirty-nine square feet that is below the habitable floor area, that doesn't include the ninety-one square feet double counted. Technically, we do by calculation of habitable floor area. I mean, the municipal code, correct?
That is correct. So if you, if you counted that double foyer, you know, this would bring it over six hundred square feet less than, than ordinance requirements.
Thank you. I have no further questions for this witness. Does anyone on the board have any questions for this witness?
In the rendering that we saw previously, this is a corner property. The next, next to the property is a brook, right? So in the rendering, I thought there were houses next to, there was another house next to it, so that might be inaccurate. Yes, exactly, exactly. But in the rendering, I think that shows houses on both sides. That confused me for a bit.
There is no house on the right.
Thank you.
Is the garage staying as it exists now?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't want to make the motion right now, but I just want to make a comment, if that's okay? Okay. I just want to tell you that we really appreciate the work that you've put into these four applications. They're really thoughtful. There's a lot of consideration going into the size of each lot. They're not tremendous. They're definitely working within the constraints of each lot. You've also done things like stormwater management. You reduced the lot coverage, you're adding dry well, so really improving these lots. So we really, we greatly appreciate that. I also want to point out that every time you presented the application, you talked about the attic space because you know that we're really hung up on that. And that's always the question. So you've anticipated our questions and you've answered them. So I appreciate that, letting us know the high point of each of the attics and that they're all pull-down stairs. So we do appreciate your thoughtfulness and that's, leave somebody else to make a motion.
First, does anybody in the audience want to make a statement regarding this application? Nope. Do you want to have a closing statement? No, I just want to say thank you very much for Mrs. Khan acknowledging that. Most people say that we don't listen, but maybe we do. I'm sorry, what'd you say? No, just kidding. Anybody like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Horn?
Approved.
Mr. Shaw, oh, Mr. Sherman, did you second it? Who seconded it? Mr. Sh-, Mr. Kenya?
Yes.
Ms. Khan votes yes. Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Ms. Kana?
Yes.
And Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This concludes the six o'clock special meeting. Going to take a two-minute break and we'll get going on the seven o'clock meeting, regularly scheduled meeting in two minutes.
...